So, welcome everyone to the July 21st, 2021 Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. And our first item of business is the consent agenda. And thanks to the vote in the last meeting we had with the policy change, we no longer read the entire consent agenda. I know y'all are as happy as I am about that. And so, since we are not reading it, I do still need to ask if there is anybody that has any items on the consent agenda they would like removed for further discussion. And if not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move for approval.
A second? So we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
At least a nine-minute credit.
At least, at least.
He always...
Thank you so much. Next, we have our gateway design overlay. Got to skip two whole pages in our agenda. And under our gateway design overlay today, we have one item. And Ms. Green, oh, no, Ms. Green, Ms. Kerr is here today. How are you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Good, good.
Margaret Ann is on a well-needed vacation leaving today.
All right, all right.
Ellen Anne.
So we have the commons at the gateway, which is the Cajun Steamer patio. Final design and site plan review of an outdoor dining/parking lot modifications to an existing multi-tenant building on 3.3 acres, zoned MU and GDO1. And it is located at 2108 Medical Center Parkway. And Cajun Steamer is the developer. Go ahead, Ms. Kerr.
Yes ma'am, this is initial design site plan review for modifications to an existing commons at the Gateway Commercial Center located along Medical Center Parkway. Cajun Steamer is a future tenant and has an active permit in a build-out area down in this corner of the building facing Medical Center Parkway. They wish to have a larger outdoor seating area. When it was approved, this was the area for the patio for this particular unit. Initially, as it was initially, and they want to utilize a 10-foot wide, 10-foot high Euro folding door facing Medical Center Parkway that will be located at this section of the building. These are panels that, of course, as you just saw, they slide to the side. The planning commission could, should consider this item and determine if the Euro folding door is appropriate for this location. There are five parking spaces that would be taken up by this particular... See if I can get this to... There are five parking spaces proposed to be removed, and the outdoor dining area would be expanded by 45 feet. Yes, let's see. They're gonna have, they're gonna extend the sidewalk that comes in front of the center, and it will go around the exterior of a extant area where the seating would be within here. This outside area right here would be the base of building landscaping for the area. And there would be, like I said, black metal railings around the patio area, as well as metal black dining furniture and dark red umbrellas. The outdoor area will be lit with decorative lighted bollards. And the exterior modification in the site chan, changes to the door require planning commission approval. Say that roll-up doors are not allowed to face a right-of-way. So this would be an instance, it's not per se really a roll-up door, it is a folding door. And we do believe that it will help with the actual landscaping that's gonna be on the exterior of the dining area to be able to shield that door from there. Staff recommends any approvals be subject to staff comments. And the planning commission may wish to combine this as a initial design review, as a final design review, as one motion. And I'm available to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC.
Okay, and if we can just confirm, our agenda says this is final design and site plan review?
Correct. And she explained to me this morning that it is the initial, but that it could be initial and final, if you all agree to do that.
So Amelia, I'm assuming that taking away four or five places doesn't impact the parking requirements?
No, sir, they still have enough parking. They overparked the area to begin with, and it did not affect the parking.
And you all don't have any major concerns with the sliding glass doors?
Matt Taylor from SEC, I think that we started off with a roll-up door here was the preference. This is kinda where we met in the middle, if you will. So I think this is much more attractive than the previous option. So I think Margaret Ann may have even been the one that suggested this based on another project. So we're happy to oblige. Obviously, as y'all have seen over the past year, outdoor dining has become much more important with COVID. So this is very important to the Cajun Steamer, and they're very excited about it. So I've also got the architect here if you have any specific questions about this door.
How many panels will there be on this one?
Three.
Hi, I'm Erin Leif with Remick Architecture. Could you repeat the question?
How many panels will be on this door? Will it be, when you look at the aesthetics, is it gonna look similar to the windows?
Oh, yeah. So the intent was for the finish to match the existing storefront, which is black aluminum. There's also an option for all of the hardware to be black as well, so it would just fade in with the existing storefront and aesthetic of the building. And the panels, I believe we could do three or four, there's options. But the intent would be to match the storefront to scale as best as possible. And it is just replacing the existing stationary storefront that's there. We would obviously have to demolish the sill, so it could be walkable through the space. But no other alterations to that opening would occur.
Does the, does the door slide into something that, where it would be quote-unquote hidden? Or just, does it all just fold up and be on one side, if that makes any sense at all?
Yep. At this time, we're just having an exterior fold-out collapsible door. It wasn't intended to slide into a pocket or be invisible.
And does it lock in place when it's open?
Yep, it'll lock in place, so it's stiff and rigid. Just the one, one panel would be stationary, facing outward into the new proposed patio space, not into any sort of sidewalk or circulation.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Lawrence?
I think Sean's pretty Euro, so I'm sure he's on this. And Ken's pretty Euro too, so I'm not even sure I know what that means.
I'll just move for approval.
Second.
And are we making a motion for an initial and final design review? Okay, motion and a second? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. Next, we have Platts and Plans. Again, we have one item. It is the Westlong Commercial Lot 1. This is for Ascension St. Thomas Rutherford. It is an initial and final design and site plan review of a 32,394-square-foot hospital slash medical office building on 3.4 acres, zoned PUD, located along Shores Road. St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital is the developer. Ms. Kerr?
Thank you all. This site plan review is for a commercial out parcel located within the Westlong Planned Unit Development. The Westlong PUD commits to meeting the gateway design overlay district design standards. Therefore, it has to be reviewed by the planning commission. The property is located along Veterans Parkway and Shores Road. The PUD was amended in 2020 to modify areas to allow for hospitals as a permitted use and to further define this area to allow medical and institutional uses. The planning commission reviewed and approved sites for a three-story, 53,000-square-foot medical office building on Lot 3 for TOA and a 25,862-square-foot medical office building on Lot 4 for Murfreesboro Medical Clinic, both adjacent to the proposed structure. The proposed plan is for a two-story building with an eight-bed microhospital on the first floor and a medical office building on the second floor. The site has access from the newly, newly-named Shores Road and come in through the backside, there's an entrance here, and then it does a circle around. You can exit back out this way or continue around the building. The developer is required to install the sidewalks along the frontage of the entire lot to install, and also to install the motor path along Veterans Parkway, install and maintain street trees, and build decorative entrance signs as required by the Westlong Planned Unit Development. The areas designated as formal open space are located between the front of the building and Veterans Parkway, all along this area. And they will include decorative pavers, benches, stone seat walls, pedestrian scale lighting, and picnic benches. The proposed building is a two-story structure with two colors of brick and Airstraft smooth face, Renaissance maple, and aluminum curtain wall. The tallest portion of this building is 42 feet 8 inches in height, which is below the maximum permitted height. The structure is heavily reliant on the metal screen wall in order to shield and screen the rooftop mechanical equipment. The ambulance area has been located on the east elevation of the property to shield it from any right-of-ways, to reduce the amount of visibility of it. The plans are in relatively good order, and staff recommends any approval of this plan be subject to all staff comments. I believe we have, I would like to invite Mr. David Maynder with Gresham Smith to the lectern to describe the architecture. And then Rob Wilson with Gresham Smith is also available to review the site layout. After their presentations, I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Thank you, good afternoon. As Amelia said, we are, we are meeting all the gateway design requirements for building design materials, percentage of glazing. There was one section of the requirement that we are asking for a slight modification. Can I zoom in on either of these? Just with the wheel? Oh, you can actually see it on this rendering here. The requirement states and calls for a 24-inch base around the entire facility. The one section that we would like our glass curtain wall to extend all the way to the ground is right at the front entrance in the main waiting public area. For us, it, one, helps just find wayfinding. It also engages the interior waiting with this new outside kind of public area that we are creating. So that's probably the only section of the building that, at this time, we don't, we don't feel we meet the entire requirement. But everything else is compliant to that extent. As she mentioned, we do, we do have a couple tones of brick and masonry glass. The concept is not only to meet the gateway design requirements, but also match St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital. This is an extension of the hospital, and we really want to recognize that, make it easy for folks to see as a patient, you know, this is part of that same service line. Other than that, I'd just really welcome any questions.
How big an area. Is it this front entrance that you're talking about? Someone were talking about your request to remove the base. Is that 10 feet or 50 feet?
It's very minimal. As you could see on the rendering, this is the entire elevation on the upper-left corner that faces Veterans. So it's just this one section that's maybe 25, 30 feet wide. And likewise, from the, the north side of the building, which is our main entrance canopy, there will be just a small section of that glass that just returns the corner. So, you know, maybe another 12, 15 feet.
So part of that footage would be the sliding doors just to get in the building, right?
Yes, sir.
So you could almost say, if I'm not, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you go into the hospital as it is today, and not the emergency entrance, but just the regular entrance, I don't think there's a base wall there either.
That's correct. And based on the rendering of the TOA facility, which was recently approved, they had very similar situation just at their entrance and waiting lobby space. It was glass all the way to the grave.
But that would just be under the overhang, right? But this is extending then down the side?
It just turns the corner, just for the width of the waiting room only?
That 25 to 30 feet down each side?
That's correct.
So it's not just front?
Right, I'm with you.
I guess I'm as much interested if we've allowed that anywhere else, Ms. Kerr? Or any of the staff that can, you know, again, yes, the, do we set a precedence that now we're gonna start allowing, well, you can extend it a little way down the, and then the next thing, it'll be halfway down? You know, I don't know, that's all I'm concerned about.
That's not the reason why we chose. It's really just mimicking what, what we're doing at the main hospital.
But the main hospital just has the straight front entrance and then, you know, so it's not like you're looking around a full section where you don't have a base?
Right. The main hospital actually has a curved wall. It's a pretty big, tall area, and that, that entire area is full glass. So essentially, we're just trying to do the same thing, our waiting area, our entrance area. And also, since this building's a little unique in that we have a, you know, we have five people, users of our building. We have walk-in emergencies, ambulance emergencies, we have deliveries, materials, we have staff, visitors, actually probably six, we have business upstairs. So it's really important to separate the hospital functions from some of those other service lines. And as a result, off of Veterans, we were very intentional that we do face Veterans and Shores Road. So we're trying to be really diligent to allow people to instantly see on Veterans for wayfinding. With that much glass, I can tell that's the entrance, you know, that is the door. So if I'm in a hurry and I need to get into the hospital quickly, it's just an intuitive way, like a design element that we would use to get people to the front door quickly. So in my opinion, it also serves a functional requirement.
You know, I get all that. We just, where I think Kathy was going, and I don't wanna speak for her, but we held to that base pretty strongly. I can remember the furniture store on Medical Center Parkway wanted to be able to have glass go all the way down. And we didn't let them do that. And then we, when we were looking at a home goods deal one time, which never came to fruition, they didn't want it because they didn't know for sure where they might section off different, you know, units. Because they were gonna lease part of the, the space out, you know, that sort of thing. We were like, well, we still wanna base there. I mean, I'm not an architect by any stretch of the imagination. Just trying to be consistent, I guess, is the best way to say it. But you're saying we approve TOA in a similar fashion?
Yes, I have a 11 by 17 rendering if you'd just like to see. It's similarly very minimal. Matter of fact, we, we had a lot of glass to, to the ground in working with Margaret Ann. We, we both felt this was a great compromise because we reduced it down to just a really small percentage of the building versus kind of where we had had it. But I'm happy to show you the TOA rendering if anybody's interested. How big is the section that we're talking about? Along Veterans, it's about 25 feet wide, and then it turns the corner right at the front door, which is about another 12 to 15 feet wide.
I think he's talking about...
So it's about two sides of our waiting room?
Yeah, but the front, I guess.
Yeah. And on the rendering, if I hover with the, with the mouse, it's just this section of glass that I'm circling here.
And do you have a rendering that shows the, the building straight on at the front entrance?
Yes, ma'am. So the upper right-hand corner is the straight-on rendering along Veterans. And then on the left, shows you the corner. And actually, I apologize, we do have the same. We have the waiting room on the backside as well. So we have probably an additional 15 feet on the backside because that's the other side of our waiting room. So when you enter the building, up here on the, on the left-hand corner, this is the main entrance for the hospital, and will also be the entrance for the emergency room. And so we're trying to separate those, those folks. So if I come in with a, with a laceration or a cold, I don't wanna intermingle that, you know, population with somebody else. So we have a waiting room on the northeast corner for the sick folks. And then we have a waiting room on the northwest corner, and that would just be for patients and visitors of just hospital guests.
So if I understand correctly, that this is... So what staff thought process on this?
I have looked at Margaret Ann's comments, and I do not say that she made any comments on that, but I do agree with Mr. Halliburton that we have always followed this regulation. And I, I think we should continue to follow that regulation with the design guidelines. I'm not familiar with the other project that they are referring to as has previously been approved for this amount of, of glass. I do know that the entrance into the facility, there's really not a front door on the front facing Veterans. The entrance into the facility is actually gonna be on the west elevation that they presented, made the front facing north towards Veterans to become a front with the glass on the sides. But I believe that we should follow along the design guidelines as we have made many others do in the past.
For what it was, for what it's worth, it looks like the canopy right there makes it pretty obvious where the entrance is to me. I mean, just not, not sure the glass would point me in the direction, but the canopy certainly would if I was pulling in there. But I don't know, I don't really know why you want glass or don't want glass.
So I do still feel like we need, you know, the, the glass on the sides. I mean, the base, the base on the glass part of the sides.
It's just, it's just a matter of, and I don't know, you know, what the additional cost is or whatever. It's just a matter of being consistent with some of these. Because, you know, some of these applicants were pretty adamant about wanting to be able to go all the way to the ground with the glass. And, you know, we didn't let them do it. It sounds like if we did it with TOA, maybe it got past us, I don't, I don't know, so.
So do you have the TOA?
Yes, I have a hard copy.
Okay, I'd love to see that, thank you. See what we did.
I just remember they were, I mean, most of them were retail, but they were pretty adamant about wanting to go down. We were pretty adamant about, no, we can't do it.
Just curious, I think some, some municipalities have that requirement because of maintenance and lawn care. It's kinda good to have a, a solid structure. But up at a main plaza where we have pedestrians and entrances, I guess there to me kinda justify the ability to have glass because you're not gonna have weed eaters and lawn mowers and landscaping. That kinda needs that solid backdrop, just be my...
We're just talking about at the front entrance under the pavilion, because this has a base.
Right, I think what he's saying is this, this is the side, but that, however many feet that might be.
It's still all right.
Right, right.
I guess they have another section. This must be another backside that has just a 12-foot section or so.
While you all are passing those around, I'm abstaining from this. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Garland. Okay.
What building is this, the TOA building? Where?
Right next door.
It's gonna be right next door.
It'd be right next door along Veterans, so it'd be to the south of this parcel.
There have been exceptions made to the past, but it's always been called an architectural feature. If this classifies to you all as an architectural feature.
I still don't see the one window in that TOA. And even if it was, I'd still be all the more reason that I don't wanna let this one go because for this very reason. We did it here, now we gotta do it here, then we're gonna have to do it on the next one. And, you know, whether we, you know, I'm not sure how that one, you know, went through, whether it had a car parked in front of that window like this one does right here. And maybe really this window goes all the way to the bottom, but...
What else are we, what else are we doing on this project? I mean, as far as we're, we're gonna try to approve the plan. We can, we can do it with or without this probably, right? That's a little bit...
Well, we have initial and final design review and a site plan review.
Yes, sir, after our final.
That's coming around here, but that's part of this. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion and then we'll, kinda like the other day, it didn't get very far, but I'll start. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, well, this is this initial, final, but that we add the base at least on the, I don't know what all the directions are, but on the side, but not necessarily the front entrance and then the backside, but not necessarily, if there's an entrance back there, not necessarily the entrance itself, if that makes any sense at all.
Let it go to the ground on the, on the side that includes the canopy, but to add back the found, or the, the base on the side of the waiting rooms? Each waiting room that is on the sides that don't have the canopy?
Correct.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Beautiful project. Next, we are moving on to our new business. Our first item under new business is a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider abandonment of the right-of-way of Florence Road. Terry Smith is the applicant. And Ms. Kerr.
Thank you. The planning commission received a right-of-way abandonment request from Mr. Terry Smith for a 356-foot linear section of Florence Road right-of-way. The request, requested right-of-way is adjacent to seven lots of the Adams Point subdivision and is property owned by the estate of Howard T. Smith. The Florence Road was realigned in 2007, the area being considered for abandonment in this segment of Old Florence Road right-of-way. The city acquired a part of the west side of the Thomas Smith property Florence for the road construction. The subject property right-of-way is currently being used for utilities and drainage that serve the adjacent developments and will require easements. The planning commission will need to discuss the right-of-way abandonment request and schedule it for a public hearing. Staff is in the process of preparing a right-of-way abandonment study that will be ready for the planning commission to review prior to the public hearing, and staff recommends a public hearing date of August the 4th.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
So Amelia, who owns the land between the road and this right-of-way abandonment?
This here?
Yes, ma'am.
The city at this time.
Okay.
The city, from what I understand, when they did the road alignment, they purchased the property.
We got somebody shaking his head saying that's not the case, so.
Come on.
Mr. Huddleston, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones, members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I think you were asking about the area between the existing Florence Road and the blue, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, the Howard Smith estate owns that also.
Okay.
And they own everything west of Florence Road, basically everything that you see on the screen.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's, you have a question? Did you have a question?
No, I did. I did, but he answered.
He answered it. All right. Any other questions?
There are none. I'll make a motion that we approve, accept all staff comments.
And I think we're looking for an August 4th public hearing date.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
That's all right. Is that what your motion is?
It is.
All right. And we have a second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I, can I make another big picture suggestion here? I don't know who puts together these agendas, but it would be helpful if it said scheduling a public hearing on these things rather than mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment. For me, I started reading through this stuff and I think that's what we're dealing with is that. And then you kind of get to the end of what's inside the agenda package. So I don't know who puts all that together on the agendas, but let's make it clear what we're doing on the agenda. We're scheduling.
What we're asking for, what we're trying to.
Is it okay with everybody, the suggestion? Because as you can see.
We've had to try to learn it all these years.
I went through this last meeting. I went through the whole thing, thought we were doing it. And I don't know, we're only scheduling a public hearing.
Right.
So our next item B, which will be another request to schedule a public hearing, and we'll see what date, but probably August 4th. But this is for a zoning application for approximately 17.48 acres located over seven city blocks, north of Mercury Boulevard, south of East Castle Street, east of South Highland Avenue, and west of First Avenue to be rezoned from RM16, RD, RS8, and CCO to PUD and CCO. Murphysboro Housing Authority is the applicant. Ms. Smith, hello.
Good afternoon. On this particular item, at the end, we may be asking you to set a public hearing, but we would like to provide an initial introduction to the project so that we have some context for the public hearing. As you can see on our zoning map, the areas that are highlighted, both the Parkside Apartment off of Castle and Vaughn Street in Highland, that is phase one of their project. And the other portions due north of Mercury Boulevard is the second phase of the project. And you can see there, it's surrounded by a lot of single-family residential as well as RM16, the Patterson Complex, and then it's adjacent to the First Avenue, some commercial adjacent to the property. Current general plan designation for this area is suburban residential. And you can see it highlighted barely. I'll change the colors for the next meeting in those yellow components in those particular areas. Existing master plan transportation actually shows Mercury Boulevard as, which will be our new Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, as a major arterial five lane. The project area also includes Highland Avenue, which is a community collector, and University Street, which is a residential collector, and shows future bike lanes and bike routes along both Mercury Boulevard for the bike lane and along Highland as a proposed bike route in our greenways, blueways, bikeways plan. Just for a context, you may recall last meeting, we actually scheduled a public hearing, actually, and abandonment right-of-way dedications were set that are going to the council, which are contingent as part of this particular project, but those are going ahead of. And the Vaughn Street abandonment, you already processed with the council several months back. In looking at the surrounding properties, again, most of it is single-family surrounding the project, but we do have the Patterson Park Community Center that actually comes all the way back to Castle and then comes all the way out to Mercury. So, and includes this little greenway that the project is going to tie into. We also have Holloway High School, a funeral home, some of the adjacent, adjacent commercial areas here and here at First Avenue and Mercury, and most of the other surrounding uses are single-family. And just so you get a layout, there are seven blocks included in the project. Block one is Patterson Park. Block two, so following left to right as if you're reading a book. Block two, block three, back over here to Hancock is block four, block five, block six adjacent to Bilbrow, and then block seven spans First Avenue to Bilbrow, Mercury to Minor. And that, you may know, currently has burial place, goes through the center of that. That's part of that abandonment process and is included. So you'll see kind of the layouts between both of those. And then there's two great contexts for you as you review this evening and the upcoming public hearing. There's two unit-type distribution plans, one that shows bedroom count, just a visual way to show where these things are. So when you look at them, next time when you get a full, and I think in your packet that was handed out by the housing authority today, you should see there's actually unit counts listed on those planned pages. So if you're wondering, well, how many units is in this block or this section? They're on this particular page. This one to me is, I think, the most helpful. It helps to really identify, everything in purple is your single-family or your duplex, one-story, single-family, two-story duplex. The row houses, which are your two, three-story, excuse me, those are in the blue on Mercury that are flanking Bilbrow in this section as well as within the Patterson Apartment Complex. And then the townhouses, which I think T for two-story, those are highlighted in orange. So again, that took me a while to figure that portion out, so that will help in reviewing your packet. And then our housing authority will be going over the red-lined area, which is the exceptions that they're requesting. And then we provided parking in case you have any parking questions, but the applicant will be going over those specific components in more depth. So the existing, though, density for the project is 16.5 units for the Parkside Apartments, which they're proposing to replace like-for-like 46 units with 46 units. And the Mercury Development, which is what they refer to as that phase two, everything else, is currently at 5.17 units to the acre, and they're looking at a 8.51 units per acre with a lot more open space enhancements. So with that, I would like to introduce, this afternoon, we have with us the illustrious Thomas Rowe, the executive director of our housing authority, who's doing a fantastic job on the Oakland's project, and their architect, Margaret Butler, who will be up here in just a moment. And they'll be going over kind of the existing conditions, what they did to pull together the project, some of those proposed development layouts at a high level, really looking at the illustrative. Normally, you wouldn't see an in-depth site plan review, but we've seen some really specifics to help us get an early start on this project, start to touch on some of that architecture today, and then go over the exceptions. But I will say, this is a fantastic project. We've been looking forward to and working hard with the architect, but seven city blocks, that does affect a lot of infrastructure, a lot of streets. So we've been incorporating fire department, traffic department, signal department, and the things that, positive on that side that we're incorporating into the project is on First Avenue at Mercury, we're looking at a future signalization there, which will help in redevelopment across the street, plus connectivity for really that neighborhood north of the street to get to the south side of the street and have a, you know, three lanes outbound, one lane inbound, and then Minor Street may have a little bit of right-of-way limitations in there. So we're wanting to make sure we have that connectivity. And then we're very excited about the incorporation of a transit stop for both near-term and long-term with the project. So with that short introduction, I will turn this over to the housing authority's architect, Ms. Margaret Butler.
Ms. Smith, can I ask you a quick question? I think you said the Mercury side, was it 5.18 or 5 something units per acre? It's eight, eight, eight and a half units per acre?
So it's, it's currently 5.17 with the duplex units that are there now. And with the new proposal, it would be up to 8.51.
That's the current. Got it, got it, got it.
Yes, sir. I figure some high-level stuff is always good context to better understand our projects. And let me just go to the first page. Little technology delay. Yeah, the technology delays are always the toughest. Why does that look like a huge file? No, it's 40 pages. There we are. And Ctrl L. Ta-da. That's not the front page, though. There we go. Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Butler. I'm with McCarty-Hulseupple, McCarty Architects, and we're proud to be working with the housing authority, Thomas Rowe, on this project. I don't want to take too much of your time. I'll breeze through this quickly, and if you have any, please feel free to stop me or any questions, just, just let me know. To give you a little background on the project, of course, we're always going to look at the site analysis and, and look at the neighborhood area. This is as if we're standing north of the property, looking south. The areas in blue are the areas we're talking about. The larger parcel on the, blue parcel on the left is the largest plat, contiguous plat. We've got three main areas. The middle one there, close to Patterson Park, community center and property. And then the Parkside unit over to the right, just illustrating here, the area in orange is commercial. So unlike the Oakland's project, you may recall, we worked on, was just really surrounded by neighborhoods. This one had a little bit of a unique situation in that it had some commercial budding right up to it across from Mercury. And then, of course, the wonderful resource, the city resource of Patterson Park and, and all its amenity. Image of the current, the current Parkside development there, the 1960-ish units which have been renovated on the outside in recent, fairly recent years, but the inside is, is very, very difficult in the housing authority because there's concrete block walls and plumbing and things. And so there's great need to replace that structure. It's 46 units, and as Holly mentioned, it will be replaced with a, due to the funding that the housing authority gets, it will be replaced with 46 units, the same number of bedrooms in all of them. The remainder of the property, as you know, mainly single-family duplex for the Mercury property, again, built in the late 50s, early 60s. Again, some of the same problems, interior walls with concrete block, and it just makes it difficult for today's lifestyle, and some of the plumbing and other issues that have gone on that needs to be replaced. Some of the surrounding properties there along Castle Street, just beginning to see a little bit of new redevelopment there, but mostly older homes. And then the Patterson Park property, and as you know, the Mercury Plaza across the street has seen some challenges through recent years with keeping retail in that. So that's, that's just kind of the neighboring properties. Holly's already reviewed the zoning that we currently have. As I mentioned, the program for the housing authority is to phase one, replace Parkside with 46 units. Phase two becomes a little bit different animal because he had, they have 74 units there now in Mercury Court. And the plan is to replace that with 127 homes, not, not buildings, but, you know, residences in that, in that development, as well as moving the Hope Clinic that's there on the corner of Hancock and Mercury now. That will be part of a commercial mixed-use building you'll see, as well as Murphysboro Housing Authority offices plan for that new mixed-use building, which will be at the corner of First and Mercury Boulevard. Like we did on Oakland, we tried to engage the community in a series of events, but unlike Oakland, where we had the housing authority's main room there and their offices full of folks like you and the neighbors and everyone, and really had a great feedback, it was COVID and we couldn't do that. So we did the best we could, and I think got some really good feedback. We went through the same types of meetings to try to get engagement and input from the public, but we had to do it virtually. We, so we had them virtually. We hosted a website. We had places where people could do digital, leave notes, and, and we collected all that. And so what we really ended up with through the process, we went, we're trying, we were trying to make the neighborhood that we put forth responsive to all the feedback that we got. So we, we tried to be as, as engaged as we could, given the circumstances. Don't expect you to see all the stuff on this schedule, but I'm just putting it in up there to let you know that we are requesting a public hearing on August 4th. We, there is a schedule. As any of these THDA funds that the housing authority has gotten, they have to be spent by a certain time. So we're requesting, you know, trying to give an introduction today and requesting a public hearing soon, just to kind of keep the housing authority on schedule. So those, unfortunately, if those funds aren't expended during a period of time, they, they lose them. So that's, that's why we're kind of marching through this as deliberately as we can. The master plan, Holly, you've seen that from what she showed. It's really kind of hard to see that. She did point out that this, this, this is block one, that's Parkside. And so there were seven blocks. And what I'm going to do is walk you through each block and just kind of give you an idea of those certain characteristics. So block one, Parkside, this is East Castle here at the top of the screen, Highland Avenue, Vaughn here. Currently, Parkside is basically developed like a donut. Those, those units surround it and there's parking in the middle. And what we tried to do was pull the parking out to the sides so that the residents would have a nicer community courtyard inside, a public green space, which will be developed and landscaped. These are developed as townhomes, two-story townhomes along East Castle, and then three-story row houses on the remainder. As you might imagine, on this amount of acreage, you kind of have to go up to get that many units there. So we're replacing the 46 for 46. We are trying to tie in, provide screening against, landscaping, fencing against the neighbors, and tie in with the walkway and the wonderful amenities that Patterson Park is planning out there. So to kind of connect that and connect that up to the sidewalk. So we've worked with the police, we've talked with the police department, Holly has, we've talked with the fire department, and so we've kind of gotten everybody. We've talked with the fire department, and so we've kind of gotten everybody settled or satisfied, I think, on their concerns here.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes, you may.
When we're talking about two-story and three-story, are we talking about there's a separate unit on the second floor than on the first floor? So a separate family would be living on the first floor that's living on the second floor? And how do you do that on the three floors? Is it all three floors or different families? Is that the deal?
Well, that's, that's a good question, and that's a little bit hard to tell easily. So these first ones on East Castle at the top, those are three-story units, and those are two-story, and that's one family per unit. The distinction we've made when you see in there row houses versus townhouse, a townhouse has one family in it, and the townhouses are always two-story. The row houses may have multiple families in them. Like in these right here, these are three-story, and these three units have three two-bedrooms, okay? They're stacked. And then this unit right here has, they have some, currently have some four-bedroom units, and their first two floors are four bedrooms, and the top floor is another family two-bedroom. So that, that's kind of how, and then this is a combination of one and three bedrooms down here, and they're stacked, so two families. The next block is two. Here we are at the corner of, this is Minor and Bilbro. And the small street that remains is not part of the Housing Authority's property, Carver Avenue. And what we tried to do here, right now, it has the cul-de-sac. And in here, we're trying to arrange the homes, again, off what we're calling pocket parks, smaller parks that might be common to all the homes. And they'll be landscaped and have, you know, site furnishings in them, sidewalks connecting them. And then we're connecting this kind of back street, which really feels more like an alley. And that's one of our requests, is if this can be reduced from a twenty-two-foot street way down to more of a twenty-foot and still maintain the fire department, you know, radii and everything to, to get that. We've also included in this block some guest parking. All these homes have their own driveway right off that alley, screened garbage cans and everything. But we did have, even though they could stack three cars in this driveway, we do have some additional guest parking. And then along Bilbro Street, all these homes will be facing Bilbro, very similar to the way they are in Oakland. The next block is, okay, we just looked at this block right here in Block Two, just moving east down Minor Street. This block really just contains street-facing homes, single-family and duplex. That's what's along here, each with their own driveways, large backyard, as you can see, landscape screening against the neighboring properties, just a very typical neighborhood street. I should point out that in each of these blocks, we do have centralized mail kiosk for them. It, well, we'll go on. We'll come back, but so you know, this is Block Seven down here. And along Minor, I'll point out while we're here, we have tried, because you know, you've got that S curve in the street there, and what we tried to do was set these townhomes back a little bit in Block Seven to create this public, kind of linear public park there with some winding walking trails and additional landscaping. So that's trying to give that a little bit back to the public and create a amenity there. Now we're going to jump back over to Hancock Street. This is Patterson Park and their big yard out in front, right here on the left. Along Hancock, currently that's where the Rover Stop is, and so that's what we've got, kind of a wide area with some nice paving and a little structure there for the Rover Stop. We've created this block to really work in tandem. Oops, we lost our feet there. I don't know if it's showing on your screen, is it not? Oh, there it goes. Okay, sorry. I don't know if I did something. We've really organized these two blocks together to, again, to create these pocket parks, this public green space, and these homes kind of work to frame it. The way these homes are, these are, these are all townhomes along here, and they have parking right outside. And then we, as you know, Patterson Park has their wrought iron fence here, but this is a beautiful green space and kind of an urban gesture to create that, pull that green space back into the neighborhood and create a nice way for neighbors to get over to Patterson Park, because they're just kind of squeaking in some corners now. And so we just tried to make that a little more gracious. As you might imagine, when we get into the architecture, we won't get into that too much today, but these homes along Mercury are going to really have two fronts, the front door for the unit and then the front, what needs to look really nice and not like a back along Mercury Boulevard. So we're still working on that. And then the only different configuration here is these homes along Minor Street. These are composed of single-family and duplex homes here. Again, park, mail kiosks, and we can go over waste receptacles if you want to. I think we've got that figured out, too. And then moving east, Block Six, we've tried to align entrance off of Minor with the alley we were proposing in Block Two, just for good traffic measure, a little bit of that extension of the public park there, townhomes, row houses along Bilbro Street and Mercury Boulevard with parking to the back. So like we've done many times, you try to get those houses, that architecture facing the street and get the parking to the back. And then the next final block is Block Seven. Well, I mentioned a mixed-use building that's here along Mercury and First, and it is planned to have on the first level, the Hope Clinic and an entrance and some office space for Murfreesboro Housing Authority and a tenant they have, Reg Succeed. And they'll be on the first and second floors for commercial use. And then on the third floor, now what you're seeing, this plan is showing you that there'll be twelve one-bedroom units on the third floor there. And again, all row houses and townhomes here. The other thing that Holly mentioned, this is very light gray square. You can see that we've pulled this back from First quite a bit for anticipated lane widening for the traffic signal to be here, clearances for visibility at the corner. So this is all pushed back a little bit to accommodate that future city development. Holly went through these plans. They're just key plans for you. I don't think we need to go through those again, where, what types of units are. Just a summary of square footages, this first phase of Parkside, roughly almost fifty-four thousand square feet. And in the Phase Two, over a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of future development. Showing just some really quick street elevations, the architecture, that is something that we are currently working with, the planning staff, and trying to get that. We'll be looking at getting that a little bit more traditional, but trying to pick up some of the gabled forms and, and house forms of the current neighborhood. And just a little before and after, this is at the corner of Mercury and First, looking north. That's how the commercial building is planned to sit at that location. And then looking, the other direction, looking south to that intersection, showing how that would work with, you know, housing units up on the upper level and then commercial on the first and second levels. So our requested exceptions involve the Parkside parking. We are recommending, as we did at Oakland, for the same population, that study was put forth when we did Oakland and approved, we're recommending one point eight stalls per unit for a total of eighty-three parking spaces for those forty-six units there. Currently, at Parkside, they have sixty-nine parking spaces and typically have fifty-eight residents with cars there. There are usually fifty-eight cars, been counted several times. So we feel like eighty-three is more than, more than enough to suffice for the residents there. We're requesting ten-foot minimum building setbacks, and that would be to the porch, not the face of the building, to any building, you know, element sticking out from the face for the side, front, and rear. Twenty-foot setback from the Mercury Boulevard right away. And then, as I mentioned, in Block Two, requesting a twenty-foot wide private alley, if you will, behind those units. So that's a lot of information. Need to answer any questions I can.
Very good explanation of all the layout in each block. So are we, are we discussing the architecture at all today, or you want to just do that at public hearing?
The staff was thinking that we would have more specifics and less you have some maybe big picture, you know, comments that you might want to add today. What staff did try to do is give you a, just a rough idea. Here are some of the areas that we're still working on diligently. And we believe in talking to Ms. Butler, they believe that we can work through those improvements to the architecture and some, you know, getting it to where it's closer to our design guidelines for an August fourth public hearing. And as she mentioned, is that the Parkside apartment section, they have funding already lined up for that one. But because this one includes both of those areas, it's kind of tied to that particular one. So we've all been working as, as a sprint, trying to get it through our processes because obviously any kind of zone change goes to Planning Commission, Planning Commission Public Hearing, City Council, and then City Council will set their public hearing, and then they'll have to come back for the specific site plan. So a lot of times, we don't get into a lot of the specifics of site plans, but because of the setback requirements that they're requesting, you have to be more accurate. So that's what's taken us a little bit longer to go through that. But I think as Margaret had pointed out, and this probably shows you a little bit going back to, as we were starting to work with. So as an example, in this top section here, we started working at maybe some grouping of the units so that instead of this that had ten units on that above slide, you can kind of see how it started to group the, the top lines, try to, so it doesn't feel like an apartment structure. I think the goal is that it feels like the adjacent neighborhood. But if you have specifics, we think the specific neighborhood looks like X. I think that that might help get us a couple more steps ahead of ourselves. If, but that's up to the commission, if you want to have that discussion today. And then Margaret's here for any questions that you may have, you know, more specifically. But I think the thing that I find helpful is that in having these streetscape elevations, there's a key plan page that shows you, you know, where these things are. But if you were actually to line up later on this evening, number six, you'll notice this third page doesn't have numbering on it. It's because it's actually the second half of that number five and number six. So that, that way you get a full streetscape when you put it side by side. So we're definitely going to be printing you the full booklet.
Booklet when the booklet lays out.
And so when the booklet will lay out, you'll be able to see those two pages back to back. And I did want to know logistics, how do we get those booklets to you without driving all over town before that meeting? But those are kind of my two questions, is one, scheduling the public hearing, if you do have some input to add today. And then maybe after the meeting, just let us know if it's best, how to get those booklets to you before the next meeting, should you set the public hearing this afternoon.
I can come pick mine up. So a couple of questions I've got. So first of all, just as it relates to looking at this page right here that we're on and kind of the ideas and elevations, do we, is there something like this that shows us like the baseline elevation for the Parkside piece?
That was my question, too.
Yes.
I only see one, I see one through seven, but it looks like one is still looking for Mercury Boulevard, which is.
I didn't see Parkside in it.
It's, yeah, I don't know that this is the most recent.
Yeah.
And that's which?
Me.
In the bottom, bottom lift. Corner there.
Under number three?
Number, number three, yes.
So that's Block One, but it's under number three. This is it. This is Parkside.
Right. This is the elevation, and we did not print all that out. We have a key plan in the booklet you'll be receiving, and I can mail it, too, that shows exactly where each one of these street elevations are cut. So that's not, we have a booklet that's a hundred and ten pages long, and we didn't print the whole thing for you today, so.
We appreciate.
Oh, is it? Okay. For the street sections?
I think that's page fifty-nine.
This is fifty-nine.
Oh, we did. Yes, we did. Sorry.
And then the next page.
Yeah, page fifty-eight, the prior page, will show you where each one of those elevations are cut.
What it's worth calling, I just kind of add to this, you know, so that's the part that we're kind of in the most hurry on because that's our Phase One and all that kind of stuff. Personally, for me, the, I, I think I would add, I would agree with maybe what you were kind of getting at as far as the architecture goes. I'm not an architect, but having those gables, those really steep gables all lined up like that doesn't really look like the neighborhood or even what I want, would want the neighborhood to eventually look like, especially where they're stacked together like that. Like if I look at number two right here, that's our screen, you know, the left half of the page begins to look a little bit more like what, and I know it's going to be difficult when you're having to still have to get the units in there, but I don't know, having six of those gables right there are what it is. But I guess I would just second the idea that we continue to do a little bit of work on the, on the architecture piece of this. And maybe that can be, is it realistic that we got two weeks to, to update that between now?
I think it is. Absolutely, absolutely. And we've, we've had, even as of yesterday, had another conversation with the folks. We've just been kind of working through this, had a lot of issues on something quite so large. And so the architecture is something we've just kind of, kind of kicked the can down the road here and really need to focus on that right now. And yes, we, I think we better understand after the conversation yesterday, kind of the goals for the way that needs to look. And we will, we will be able to pull, pull a different look together, I think, based on our understanding. The thought on this development, out of the planning process, that this development would be more of a transition development, it didn't look quite as, quite as detailed as what we did in Oakland, just because it had the commercial and the Patterson Park all around it and was trying to be transitional. But as I understand it, we'd like a little bit more of a traditional look, and so that's what we'll be working on over the next week or so.
Because I do think what I'm hearing is that basically we'll probably be looking at what you are going to be proposing for the architecture on the night of the public hearing.
That's right.
And so therefore, you know, it's going to be much harder for us to look to a project this big, be able to look at that. And unless we just absolutely love everything we see the minute we see it, how are we going to, you know, this is our opportunity to provide the feedback. I think you are hearing, and, you know, this is not the look we want to see. And if we're approved, being asked to approve a planned development, we cannot approve it if we don't like what we see on the pages that you present to us. And so if we only have the opportunity at public hearing to tell you what we think about what we see, that's what you're asking us to do. So that's just what you'll get on the night of public hearing if we go ahead and schedule for August fourth. I think. I think we all certainly understand funding, THDA, hard to get, want to keep it while you got it, want to get it done. But that is not going to hurry us into making a decision on something that we think we need more time on, or we feel like we need a better product for the city of Murfreesboro. I think we're still going to do all we can to make sure we have the best product for the city of Murfreesboro, because it is a large project and it is making a statement. And right now, I don't see it making the statement we might want it to make for our city. So those are just my, sorry, long comments.
Understand.
Any other comments?
So, so today, we can, if there aren't any more comments, we could, we can go forward, schedule the public hearing, as long as you think August 4th is a reasonable timeframe to kind of work with staff. And, and, I mean, I guess at the end of the day, we can divert when it comes, if it's not to that point, and it might just have some impact on the funding, you know, the funding timeline or whatever, but we can always do that at the time if we had to. So if everybody's comfortable with it, well, I can, I'll make the motion that we schedule the public hearing for August the 4th.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask one more question now that we're?
Sure.
What's all the outdoor seating on the backside of the Housing Authority building?
It's just for the, the, it's just an outdoor plaza for the residents. There's a little garden over to the side, you'll see in the, in the plan, and just a little outdoor plaza for the office, staff, and residents.
Rick thought there was going to be a restaurant back there.
Actually, I did think there was. It was a mixed-use, so I was like, maybe there's a restaurant.
If you wanted to put another business.
Eurodora in there, so. Actually, well, I thought, yeah.
Okay.
I was there.
We are excited about everything you all are doing in this whole scheme of things. So I know we're going to see a great, great project. So thank you very much.
And I think, as Margaret mentioned, I think really we spent so much time on the site plan and doing more than we normally would do, that I think we're, we're in a good position with the site plan layout. So now it's diving in deep on, on that other portion, and staff's willing to do what it takes to be able to bring you a good project.
We're still making comments.
I would say, from the Housing Authority standpoint, I mean, we definitely appreciate the public input. I attended one of the meetings online, and it was definitely a good session, so.
I would just also say, it's worth knowing the, a little more next time, before, I'll prepare myself on the exceptions that were being asked, just to be really clear on, I would like you seeing the site plan and where the 10-foot versus 20-foot, where we were really talking about, before we get too far down the road, if you're asking for something that maybe will then get more pushback, I'd hate for you to get that later. And I will put my two cents in on the direction of the architects, architectures going. I actually happen to like the direction probably more than some, but, you know, it's a very personal preference type thing, and it's, it's a unique situation, and it's a, it's a busy street, it's street-facing, it's, it's a, it's, it's got a different intent, you know, in general, and I, I think it's a really good-looking project, so.
And, and if you want to start looking at some things in advance, when we did post the agenda, the whole project is on there, but we had to compress it down to 80 megs versus 330 megs. So that's the reason why you have hard copies today, and you'll have hard copies for the other. But if you want to get a jump or a head start, there are the specific layouts that give you the 10-foot and the dimensions on all of those things. Staff did a lot of that in advance, which normally we wouldn't see that specific until site plan review. But in this case, we wanted to make sure we saw that, and they also incorporated our sidewalk project that's going in along Mercury. So that's also incorporated into those site designs, but it's just not as clean and clear because it's a less quality, and that's why you'll get the hard copies, because you just can't get the quality, unfortunately, when we post it to our website.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item under new business is the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to Section 13, Plan Development Regulations, and Section 24, Overlay District Regulations, Article Six, CCO, the City Core Overlay District. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant, Ms. Smith.
Well, good afternoon again. Included in your packet, this is an item that we're ultimately going to be asking for a public hearing, but we just wanted to provide a quick introduction on this particular one. So our staff, myself, Mavvy Bromley, Greg McKnight, Brad Barbie, and comments from additional staffers have been working on some modifications to our CCO district, now that we've been working with it for a little over a year. And we've also reached out to some of our stakeholders, of which we just started to get some of their comments back, and we're in process of reviewing that. But it really affects two different sections of our existing zoning ordinance, Section 24, which is our CCO, or excuse me, Section 24, which is our CCO in Article Six, is the specifics for what can be done within our CCO. And when we looked at it, our Plan Development Regulations currently state that no exceptions can be made to CCO or other overlay districts, even with their planned unit development. So that's why we've incorporated the Plan Development section of the code as well. But basically, the modifications to that Section 13 would allow for exemptions in overlay district zones like the CCO and the historic district, as allowed to be similar to our comparative zone districts. And then, secondly, in the CCO, really our focuses are on, or the higher ones that come to fruition are accessory apartments and how they're addressed currently, parking provisions, how they're addressed both in the single-family and in the commercial components, open space requirements. You may recall that citywide, it's looking at 20%. Here, we're looking at maybe 15, because all the lots are much, much smaller than in most areas of town. Formal open space, you recall on several PRDs, we had discussion of how formal open space was treated versus regular open space, and why can't we allow rooftop patios to count as open space? So we heard that loud and clear, and have included some provisions to allow for those things, because we know that as we get closer and closer to downtown, those uses may not want to be on ground level where other people can publicly access them. And we may also want to only have those be provided when we're at more than eight units on a particular project, because less than that, you're really not having that kind of use as much. And then really clarifying some of our landscape requirement standards to allow alternative arrangements. You know, most of the areas where you're building brand-new, where nothing's been before, you can usually meet those requirements and standards easily. In the CCO, we're doing a lot of redevelopment or repurpose or reuse of those properties. So we did provide a red-line track changes version. You may say, gosh, we've never seen it look like this before. I'm used to working with attorneys, and attorneys usually like red-line track changes. To me, I like it because you can see what the changes are. This is what the current zoning ordinance says, and here's how we're looking at tweaking that. So we wanted to just provide you a brief overview before asking you to set for a public hearing that August 4th date. And if there's anything that you would like us to include in that staff report that maybe you think might be helpful, let us know that today, so we can also provide that for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding the amendments to the zoning ordinance and the CCO?
If none, I move to set a public hearing for August 4th.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, August 4th.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. And we have staff reports and other business. Mr. McKnight?
Good evening, guys. Chair Jones and Planning Commission, I'd like to add to other business. It's a mandatory forel for a gas line relocation at Teagle Park, and Kayla Walker with Administration will present that to the Commission.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Kayla Walker with staff, and this is, United Cities Gas placed a gas line under the property owned by Richard Siegel many, many years ago. After the property was given to the city, the city installed soccer fields over portions of the gas lines. Since this installation did not involve excavation, there was no need to relocate those lines at the time. Excavation will be required to construct the drainage system for the fields with the artificial turf, which now requires relocation of those lines. Atmos Gas proposes to abandon the current easement areas, which is Exhibit A, which is the first, well, the second sheet in that packet. And the city proposes to grant a new gas line easement to Atmos, which is Exhibit B, which is the third sheet in the packet. Staff request, Planning Commission recommend approval of the gas line relocation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And this will just be a motion for approval today, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll move for approval, said our staff members.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Any other staff reports, any other business? Okay, thank you very much. We stand adjourned.